Okay. Make yourself a note, John.
Yeah.
I brought my soap. Oh, if I could use that and I hand sanitizer. Worried about catching it from the surface, really. And less concerned about that.
We're probably on YouTube already and here I am anti-fogging my glasses. Yeah, we're on, aren't we? Oh, well. None of us can see until we do this anyway, so we may as well wait.
Yeah, we all wear gloves. Thank you, Linda. Hand sanitizer.
This place that you.
You gotta get it the right way.
Okay, thanks for your patience. It's 9:00 a.m. and I'd like to call the August 4th, 2020 City Council meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Garza?
Here.
Hunter Staker-Holloway?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today's prayer will be given to us by Pastor Darryl Peterson. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm glad to see everybody's looking well. We don't recognize all of you, but that's okay. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly and Most Gracious Father, we humbly come before you and, Father, we thank you that as we continue to lift up our council members, Father, lift up our leadership, our management, our police department, fire department, and Lord God for all the things that they do, but not only that, but all the workers within the city. We pray, Father God, the blessings over them and wisdom and guidance and understanding. We thank you, Father, for the privileges that we have to come before you. We thank you, Father God, for this. This virus is for a season. And, Father, we know it's not your season, but, Father, we just thank you that we pray and we stand in the gap. We thank you, Lord God, that that virus has the ability to die and completely be gone. And, Father, we know there's a time in the season that that will happen. We thank you for that. We thank you, Lord God, for this day is a blessed day. We thank you, Father, it's a day that we have a privilege to voice our opinion in voting for our political arena. And, Father, we just pray that everybody does their part. But, Father, we know there's so many good things and so many bad things that's being said about everybody. And I pray for the right people to be voted in. And, Father, there's times that only you know who they are. And we thank you for that. And, Father, for the wisdom to know who and what and when. And we thank you for this day is a blessed day, no matter how it looks and how it is, that, Father God, we know that you have the ability to turn it around, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the time in the meeting when we ask people to come to the podium if they have items that they'd like to discuss before the council that are not on the agenda. We ask that you state your name and address and limit your remarks to five minutes.
My name is Anthony Frischmeyer. I live at 511 East Avenue C. First Miss Mayor, I'd like to present to you some many signatures from our city and community in support of hiring the Human Relations Commissioner full-time. So, I'm here in support for the city of Hutchinson to fully fund the salary benefits and programming dollars for the full-time human relations officer. As a child growing up in Hutchinson, I was introduced to discrimination at a pretty early age. I was partially raised by a grandmother and an uncle who were both blind. In their lives, they were discriminated against. My uncle was not allowed to go to public school because of his disability. When he decided that living on a disability check was not enough to live a quality life and wanted to join the workforce, he would get job interviews, but when he'd show up for these interviews, he was told he couldn't be hired because he had a disability. To me, that's wrong. As a parent, I've witnessed my daughter come home with tears in her eyes because she was called a racial slur and told to go back to Mexico. No child should be, have to deal with that. In a city, nobody should have to deal with that. I feel that by funding this position, you have a chance to right a wrong that has been in the city for too long. This month, we celebrated the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. That's our civil rights in the disability community. Yet, we're still discriminated against at a much higher rate than most individuals. Hutchinson's motto is come share our space. In my opinion, nobody's going to want to share our space if they don't feel safe. And by funding this position, you're just giving an extra safety net to those individuals who do feel discriminated against. So, please, you know, fund this and make Hutchinson a place that's worth sharing. And, in my opinion, if you don't fund this, all I can say is shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there others who would like to address the council on this or other items?
Wait for some similar words. Doesn't matter who.
No, not necessarily.
You might want to suggest, did that gentleman leave? That, I hope I can take this off so I can talk better. The city of Hutchinson used to have an officer that dealt.
Can you please, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Sullivan, 2300 West 56th. The city of Hutchinson used to have an officer that dealt with the problems that he's dealing with, and it wasn't the Human Relations Commission. But I think that position may have been deleted a couple of years ago. I'm not sure about that. Anyway, I'm not here to support the full-time position because I was on the Human Relations Commission for about eight years, more than I suppose I was supposed to, but I was voted back in again because there was no interest in serving on that position. And we had a meeting. There was a lot of demand for the full-time position and I was kind of talked down and I was kind of the minority on that commission, the Human Relations Commission. But at any rate, we had a meeting and I think, let's see. Who was there? Steve Deckent and David Enske were there. And they, to the Human Relations Commission, they were there to represent the council. And they basically said, we're going to try a halftime position and not fully enforce all of the code and see if there was more complaints or if it really was necessary based on the number of complaints. Well, it's my understanding that we've had five complaints and I didn't get a copy of the report. It used to be we always got a copy of that report from the assistant city manager every meeting. Anyway, my understanding is you only had five complaints. Prior to that, since 2008, when they had a full-time person, they averaged two complaints per year. And there was a time where we went 13 months without any complaints. And when people suggest they need a place to go when they experience discrimination, they had a place to go. They have had a place since 2008. And the city's provided someone to field those complaints, to forward those complaints where they need to go so they'll get justification or just results. When Merrill Die did that for years, and she did a great job of that, she fielded all the complaints, she took them where they needed to go, and she followed them through to completion. At any rate, based on the numbers, it's not justified to spend, you know, $150,000 a year on a position that handles two or three complaints a year. For the last year, we've had a halftime person and she's done a lot of the PR stuff and circulating to get more complaints filed there. But apparently, that hasn't been all that successful in terms of numbers of complaints. So, when people say, we have all these complaints, where are they and why didn't they come to her when they had the opportunity? Let's see, then there's some suggestion we had this subpoena power and the halftime person was not given that subpoena power because that's really, well, if you hire a new person and they have the subpoena power, they basically will be, they'll investigate, they'll prosecute, they'll judge, and they'll be the jury, and they'll execute whatever result they have. That's going way too far for one person to have that much power. They could ruin people. They could ruin their lives, they could ruin their jobs, and that's been done in other parts of the country. Anyway, I think I heard something on the radio a couple of weeks ago, and the mayor used the term inclusive. And everybody's included, has been since 2008 when Merrill Die was doing that from all those years and when DeJada did it over the last year. And I kind of want to point out that inclusive should include everybody, including white people. I think the mayor had said to me in a public meeting, my voice doesn't count because I'm a white, male, Christian. I think she used the word Protestant. But frankly, white, male Christians matter too. Abraham Lincoln was a white, male Protestant.
Slave owner.
Without everybody being included in your term inclusive, you're not being fair. Thanks.
Appreciate your comments, Mike, but I would be remiss to not correct one thing. You did misquote me. In that meeting, I did not say your voice didn't matter. I said that as a white heterosexual, heterosexual, middle-class Protestant male, you're not in the best position to discuss whether or not discrimination exists because it doesn't broadly affect you. Everyone's voice matters.
I suppose, Mayor, that's on, recorded somewhere, I don't know, but that's not what you said.
That's exactly what I said, and there were about 100 people there and the media was there, so.
I've had other people say that you've told them too, your voice doesn't matter because you're white.
Okay, well, that's absurd. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Hi there. I might do the same. David Enske, 1002 Dundee Court. I had some prepared remarks, but I heard my name mentioned in the last one and it dovetails a little bit with what I was going to say anyways. I was at a lot of those various meetings, as you well know, when they were being handled and the discussions about whether or not there should be a replacement for the position because Merrill Die had held that position, sort of. She was the assistant city manager and fell within her purview to do that, so it wasn't her full-time position. Prior to that, I think there was another lady in that position. I don't recall her name.
Lila Fritsch.
Pardon me?
Lila Fritsch.
Thank you very kindly, Lila. Subsequently then, the position did go unfulfilled for, I believe, a decade or better, something in that effect. When we were at those meetings, and I can't speak for Mr. Decken because he's not here, I was approaching it from a standpoint of a goal of trying to get the position filled. If that meant I had to capitulate somewhat and accept a part-time role, I was willing to do so because I thought that over time, it would bear out that the role was necessary. I was misguided, however, when I thought that purely a case count would be a good measure for how to deem the job worthy. As we all know, we learn, we grow, we see. There's been a lot of change and a lot of things that have still stayed the same as well. But what I've noticed here recently is that the case count, that could be affected by so many different things, whether or not the individual is here on a full-time basis, whether or not the city hall itself is approachable. During the pandemic, everything became challenging to get in front of anybody. So, there's a lot of reasons why case count may or may not be up. She's also trying to make inroads into places where some people are a little bit guarded and things like that. But I think if we would be remiss if we only use the case count as a means to justify the position. In the various conversations I had with the majority of the people I spoke with from all walks of life, they deemed it necessary. They don't want to see the city of Hutchinson become the next Portland, if you will, the next Seattle, the next Ferguson, if you will. And by having somebody in that role that could help facilitate different events, originally I thought from an education piece, but most recently with the two various protests, and I think you saw a distinct difference between the two protests. The one that was organized and the human relations officer, the Hutch PD, Hutch and Harmony, other outfits, all participated in, although it was very heated, very passionate, it was a well-held event and it never got out of control or had anything going. The secondary event, which was the March Down Main Street, also had no ill outcome, which was great, but there was a much, much different feel associated with that one. I remember waking up feeling like I was sitting on a powder keg. What was going to happen? I office on 30th Street, there was folks that were boarding up. I'm not begrudging their choices or decisions to do so. I'm in insurance. You always default to safety and then things like that. But there was a much different feeling. I feel that a full-time human relations officer can help facilitate some of those type of conflicts, isn't the right word, but protests, events, things like that. So, an education piece, I think, is key. And I think maybe a review of ordinance and policy to see if there are any discriminatory type things. I have emailed each of you with a lot of those remarks already and I appreciate the responses I got, so I'll leave it at that. But I do urge you to consider making it a full-time position. One of my more proud moments as I left office from sitting up there was when, the fact that we were able to fill the position. One of my less proud moments in hindsight is the fact that we didn't do it on a full-time basis, but that's on me. Lastly, I watch you guys every Tuesday. I enjoy your work. I will tell you, it's much easier to sit out here than it is to sit up there, so keep up the good work and please consider looking into that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, whoever else?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Aubrey Abbott Patterson. My address is 2708 Tyler Street, and I am the president and CEO of the Hutchinson Community Foundation. And I, too, appreciate you and all the decisions you make every day on behalf of the rest of us. Today, I come back again to let you know that the Community Foundation sees that the human relations position and the work that's being done by our human relations officer is very important to our community every day and even more important right now. And we would like to support the work of the Human Relations Commission and Officer if it suits you and if you're ready to invest in that person's full-time position with benefits. We know it's a tough time with budgets right now and the Community Foundation is always looking for ways to support the people of this community and to make sure that everyone here feels supported as though they belong. And that means those protected classes of people too, who are often discriminated against, and making sure that they have recourse and a person they trust that they can go to to ask for help. And we believe that happens in the human relations officer position and in that commission and that with a person who has enough hours in the week and enough time, overtime, to build the relationships, we will start to hear more about the discrimination that happens in our community. And I've done some of my own work in talking to people and asking, and I believe that there is discrimination. I don't think Hutchinson's a terrible place for anyone to live, but I do think that discrimination's happening in overt and covert sorts of ways and that we should, we should support people. When they say they're being discriminated against, we should look into those instances. I do see that as the reactive portion of this position and this funding, that we're reacting to something that's already happened. I'm even more interested in supporting the programming that the officer could do to proactively convene people to talk about tough issues and bring groups of people together and that the officer needs more hours in the week to be able to do that well. And they also need money to be able to provide that kind of programming. And I think that's probably the role for the Community Foundation. If you're willing to fund the full salary and benefits, we would provide funding of $20,000 a year for the next three years from the Fund for Hutchinson, which is a fund that hundreds of people have given to over 30 years. And we think this is the time when we should use this money in this way to support the people of Hutchinson. And so, we're ready to do that if you're ready to do it.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic or any other item, not on the agenda?
Good morning. My name is Derek Pope, and I'm here to speak in behalf of the full-time position that they have in reference to Mrs. Moore. I think that it's a necessity that she be here full-time. I know that discrimination does exist here in Hutchinson, Kansas. It has. It's hit me on several occasions as well, so I know that it does exist. But my main reason in being here today is to know that you all have actually taken oath to uphold the state and the United States Constitution. And so, what we're asking you to do is to fulfill that oath that you all are saying that you have sworn to in reference to, when it comes to all issues. And so, this is what we're basically here to do to see, because like I said, we have to understand that when we start talking about Christianity and things like this as well, when we're adding this into our daily lives, that it says, "And God made all nations from one blood," Acts 17, 26 verse. That means nobody's superior to no one. We're all the same. We're supposed to be children of God regardless of whatever the situation is, so we need to be treated. It also says, "Love ye one another as I have loved you." It says the same thing. So, that means everybody. It doesn't say a specific color. It means everybody. So, like I said, it is a necessity that we do hire this young lady full-time. And like I said, we would ask that you guys just uphold the oath that you guys swore to, and that's all we can ask. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who would like to speak on this item or any other items that aren't on the agenda? Coming up?
Go, Steve.
Hi there. My name is Steve Brock, 1302 Bristol Road, Hutchinson. And I'm here on certainly a less serious issue, but an important one, in our opinion. I'm here to represent the pickleball group of Hutchinson. And I just wanted, I knew that there's been some conversations with our mayor from our group and here to answer any questions, but maybe to educate a little bit on the sport of upcoming, sport of pickleball. As we get older, and I am included in that, the basketball, tennis sport is harder on our bones. And the last time I walked out of an orthopedic place, I said, I think I'm done with basketball. So, about 10 years ago, pickleball started here in the United States, maybe longer, but really has picked up the last five years. I had a retired friend that plays winters in Arizona, and there's resorts there with always around 16 to 20 courts on up to 116 courts. Here in Hutchinson, we're limited on pickleball. We have around 70 to 100 people playing pickleball here in Hutchinson that we know of. We started down at Elmdale. Of course, that's a retirement center, so you have to be 55 years older to join that. There's Prairie Dunes that has pickleball courts out there that the private club members are able to play out there. I think there's some private individuals around town. I think Peels Store has some group playing there. And then the firefighters, I think, are playing someone. A couple of churches have a couple. But as far as public goes, we have nothing. And there's a pickleball grandfather here in town, his name is Don Beidler, that I think has been to the commission before, a couple of years ago, worked with Justin and John at the time, and we're saying, yeah, the two-year plan is to have a pickleball complex. That was four years ago. Now, we're four years down the road. We still have no public place to play pickleball. We've, through the help of John and Justin and myself, we've garnered the use of the Fairgrounds tennis courts. And a tennis court can make a pickleball court with some taping and majoring into two courts of a tennis court. Of course, we all know, and I think, I don't know how many there are tennis courts around town, but all are in dire need of repair, normally not used at all. In fact, if you drove by before this year, the Fairgrounds courts, very seldom was more than one or two courts ever used. Well, with the pandemic now, those courts have been a lot busier this spring with all kinds of people, all the way from tennis to pickleball to other type of sports over there. So, what we've done to the help of John and Justin, we've taped off some courts over there, put some signs up saying, please, these are multi-use courts. And we've run into some competition with the tennis players over there that don't like us there. They've torn up our tape, probably seven or eight times. We've got $400 invested in private money to retape courts. We've moved over to courts that they say they didn't want to play on. We've put up signs, the city has, Justin has worked with us to put up signs. Those signs have been torn down, thrown away. We had a meeting, I've scheduled a meeting with Justin, Kevin Armstrong, and Tony Finley, saying, what can we do here? So, the people that were tearing up our tape, we sort of knew who they were and they've been talked to, and that has helped. Other than about 10 days ago, they got torn up again. But luckily, we put some tape down that when they tore it up, they didn't tear it upright, and now we have the glue residue left that is pretty good lines. And that's probably good for everybody because they can't tear that up. And the agreement was. And the agreement was that we could go to, the school starts, to tell the tennis players and team start needing the courts full-time, and they have a tournament scheduled here, I think, this year for the first time in four years. So anyway, the bottom line is I'm here to have a short-term option for our pickleball group and then put in a bug in your guys' ear for a long-term option. And I hate to use this adage of, "Well, everybody else is doing this and that." As parents, we say, "I don't care about that. This is what we're doing." But Garden City's building six new, Great Bend has six, Manhattan's building an indoor complex with six or eight, and Dale has two. Newton has one. Heston has one. Goddard, Derby, Mulvane, Hayesville is building a complex. So Topeka has eight to 10 already. It's out there. It's a sport that's growing. And most, some of the people that we didn't even know about are over there at the tennis courts, saying, "Oh, we go to Chicken Pickle in Wichita. We go to Newton. We go to somewhere else to play pickleball because we can't play it here." I know it's a bad time for money spending. I've been here with the Vitality team. I hate to always come back asking for money, but I think we need a short-term goal, and that is to put, we've worked with the high school. We've worked with the Kansas State High School Athletic Association, saying it is okay to put permanent pickleball lines on tennis courts and tournaments and high school tennis can still play on those courts. If the lines are shadow lines, not contrasting to the white lines in tennis, and they got to be stopped between an inch and a half of the existing tennis line, so, which we would be happy with ourselves. That would be a short-term goal. That's going to run around $3,000 to put permanent lines, painted lines, on the existing tennis courts on two courts. There's eight courts up there at the complex. Just FYI, in 2005 is when those were built, and I had Linda here check into those minutes. 61% was paid by the city, 20% by the high school, 12% by HCC, and another 13%, I think it was, by Hetrack. So between Hetrack and the city, they own around 70% of those courts, different than what some people from the high school might say. No, these are the high school courts. Well, they're really public courts, and we need to get better use out of them. I think painting the lines could do that. Ultimately, I would like you guys to consider, and Justin, I think, is working on that, a complex, probably in Kansas, maybe an indoor complex. Now we're talking upwards of $300,000, $400,000, but possibly an outdoor complex, which would be around $225,000 to build six pickleball courts.
I got a question.
Questions.
What is pickleball?
Good question. I knew there was probably some. Four years ago, one of my friends said, "Hey, I'm playing this pickleball down in Arizona." And I said, "What are you talking about?" Well, pickleball is a, it's an amazing sport. It's a mix between tennis, ping pong, racquetball. It's played with wiffle ball. It's played on a 40 by 20 foot court versus, which is about not even quite the size of half of a tennis court. And it's mainly played in pairs, so there's four, two on each side. It's a lower net than tennis, even though it's about two inches difference. It makes a big difference, but we do see a lot of people over on the tennis courts playing with the tennis nets. We, as our group, there's 25 of those intermediate, have our own nets that we purchased and we set up each time. So I would look for you. There's a pickleball website you can get on, but it's a older person's, although we have some people that are in their 20s going to college. Beau Tolbert here in town is 21 and is an excellent pickleball player, played tennis at the Juco. And so there's lots of young people, pickle, starting with pickleball also. But it is a retirement community. It started in Arizona, Phoenix, Texas, Florida, but has grown immensely here in the United States, up to the northern countries. As you get north, obviously, there are more indoor courts.
Do you play with a hand?
It's a paddle, smaller than a tennis, bigger than a ping pong, a wiffle ball, and there's certain rules. It's kind of like you have to get it into a certain section of the court to first serve, and then after that, and there's called a kitchen where you can't get into, close to the nets. You just can't get up and slam over the net. You have to stay back about four feet, and there's rules about getting in in the kitchen.
So what you're telling me, what I understand is that we can make a tennis court into a pickle court too, make that tennis court dual.
That's correct.
Operation.
And in a tennis court, you can get two pickleball courts. That's what we have taped up there. You might just go up to the, stop by the Severance Street Fairgrounds courts. Over on the northwest section, we have two, three courts taped off, two on one tennis court, and then a third, a half of another tennis court. So of the eight courts, we're only right now using two, really one and a half. So and we're there probably four to five nights a week because a lot of our people still work, and like Monday night, we had 20. Last night, we had 18. So even with three courts, we have people waiting to play.
My only concern is this. I've never seen pickleball, but it sounds interesting. Now, you'd think there would be a problem with, we'd have to reserve one area for pickleball because a lot of tennis players are playing Hutch. You know what I mean? And you think they would complain that pickleball, like you were saying, that people get mad at you being on what they think is their court?
There shouldn't be any, because number one, we don't, we're not playing in the afternoon. So when we even get into the school year, other than Saturdays, which they don't play on Saturdays, I don't think, all their matches are on in the afternoons.
I see.
Tournaments are in the afternoons. So we start at 6:00, 6:30, depending on sun and wind and those type of things. But the lines, according to, most tennis players up there don't say the lines don't bother them. Even the Kansas State High School says they have other high schools.
Have other tennis courts and kind of raggedy ones in a few places throughout town that could be converted so that when it...
We've looked at those. Justin has always said he's going to, he's gotten the budget, I think, to redo Rice Park. Rice Park is cracking.
Yeah, wouldn't it be good to do like a, instead of going where we already have kind of used nice ones, go into Rice Park and making those better and just making them dual with the shadow lines?
Well, I think that's the long-term plan.
Yeah, the problem is you're looking at around $125,000 to redo Rice Park, and then he's looking at maybe making it multi-use.
When's that project on the...
Well, it's been pushed back.
I think it was slated even for discussion this year, but of course COVID's pushed everything back.
It went away.
And it's been on the agenda for four years.
Yeah.
And it's kept moving back. What right now we're asking is $3,000 to mark the tennis courts at Severance, which should be okay with everyone, including Kansas State High School, including us. And it's not so okay with the high school tennis coach, but the athletic director, Kevin Armstrong, says, "Well, you know, we can get along with that."
So that's the area of discussion where I'd like to bring some more information to you all. I don't think I dispute anything, at least so far that I've been aware of as to what the gentleman's telling us here. It does appear to be an ongoing issue. The funding for it, in a perfect world, would be not small dollars. They'd be significant. And from other cities that I've been at, this is a growing recreational sport without a doubt. So I'll read excerpts from an email that I had from Justin only several weeks ago, and he agrees, "The best solution is for us to have permanent shadow lines, a couple of the courts at Fairgrounds Park up on Severance Street." We're running into an issue because that's not what 308 wants, and so we're having to honor them as a partner in the agreement that we currently have. We don't own these fields. We're under mutual agreement from the state for the use of them, is my understanding. So we're trying to work that out. I do know that he had planned on having a meeting here that's probably either already happened very recently or is about to happen based on the timing of his suggestion. Also, when the pickleball group first approached the city about adding lines to the courts, Paul was concerned that it might violate the agreements that we have with 308. And then he goes on to say that he's attempting to meet with Kevin at 308 to resolve this issue. So my response to you all is, yes, it's a city issue, but it's more than that. It's certainly more than a city issue. There's other participants in this discussion that we are working with actively. And I think they are stripping the tape off the ground, of course. I'm glad to hear that some of that residue is in place. They still allow you to use it, but that's the issue we have, and frankly, until we develop and construct new courts, I think we're going to be dealing with this.
Yeah, most of my conversations have been with Dawn, and he indicated that he was trying to have a meeting with the superintendent to try to resolve this at a higher level. I don't know if that took place or not.
No, it hasn't. We have met, like I said, with Kevin Armstrong. I thought I'd start there because that's who the tennis coach would report to.
No, for sure, for sure.
We had a great meeting. Everybody's saying, "Well, we need to do something," but Justin did say, "We do have a great relationship, the city does, with the high school, and we don't want to ruin that," but they're not their courts either, so.
Would it be appropriate to stripe the older courts even though we eventually want to convert them?
They're the older courts.
Well, the Rice Park courts.
Elmdale. The problem is, there's, we went to Rice Park. We went to the Juco. I got approval from Josh Gooch, but there's those courts along with Elmdale courts on the outside, along with the tennis courts down. None of them are in any kind of shape. The problem you got, different than the tennis ball, we're playing with a wiffle ball that even a small crack makes it divvy off. Even asphalt courts, which is at the high school, we said, "Well, can we use the high school courts?" And 308 was open to having us use those. But we walked over there, because they're asphalt, like we found on the trails, asphalt cracks. Asphalt's rough. So it's very hard. There's, be only the south side of the high school courts that we could play on because the north side has a crack running down through it. Some of the cracks, like at Rice Park, are three inches wide, six inches deep, all the way through. So none of the courts in town are able to play pickleball without a huge investment of redoing the whole pad. So the only option we have is the Fairgrounds courts that are in good shape. About four years ago, they were redone, and the city put in 20,000. The high school put in 20,000. The agreement was that the high school would maintain the courts, and of course, it's ground leased from the fair, from the state, but I guess because of the expense, the city pitched in another 20,000 to redo the courts about four years ago, and they're in good shape. Best for us to play on.
Steve, just keep it on the radar. Being here today helps elevate the need and the desire.
Well, I knew that, thank you so much if you didn't even know what pickleball was. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
You could play with a pickle or something.
You know, I'm not sure why it's called pickleball, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to the council on issues not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Please call the next item.
Item 5, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda is printed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyros DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 6A, consider ordinance amending section 27-406A of the Hutchinson City Code.
Good morning. Amy Allison, senior planner. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So the request before you today is an amendment to the use table, the residential section of the zoning regulations, chapter 27. Quick overview of what the proposal is. Currently, our zoning ordinance allows ADUs, which for those of you that might not know, they're called accessory dwelling units, to be in the R3, R4, and R6 districts. Now, back in 2018, the planning department underwent a very extensive rewrite of our use table where we added the specific use to the table for the first time. During that time, there is, there really wasn't any consideration to include accessory dwelling units in the R5 district because it's our high-density residential. It's predominantly used for multifamily residential developments. However, we do in some cases have some properties that are single-family that are zoned R5. In fact, you can even still build a single-unit living family in the R5 zoning district. It's just not very common. So a couple of weeks ago, our department received an application for an accessory dwelling unit. And of course, when we pulled up the zoning district for that property, we found it was in R5, and we found out we have a discrepancy in our use table. So the amendment, what we're requesting is to essentially just allow ADUs in the R5 zoning district with design standards. These are the design standards that are for all the other zoning districts where it's permitted. And then we listed what those design standards are. It has to be a minimum of 500 square feet, maximum of 960. Has to be located in a side or rear yard. Has to be separated from adjacent parcels by a six-foot privacy fence. And then a minimum of one taped parking space for the ADU. That's in addition to the required parking for the principal dwelling unit. Property owners have to either reside in the principal or accessory dwelling unit, and it has to be constructed of residential materials compatible with the principal structure, and it has to meet all other applicable zoning and building codes. Now, when we reviewed it, we thought, oh, maybe there might be other things we'd like to add, but under further review, we thought, no, this fit very well still within the R5 district, and we couldn't think of any other potential negative side effects that would need to be mitigated through the design requirements. So we've gone through the whole public hearing process for this request. It went to the Planning Commission study session on June 9th where they approved it, so it went to the public hearing on July 14th. We did not receive any comments from the public, so the Planning Commission approved the ordinance amendment on a vote of seven to zero. All of the other information that staff would like you to see is in the staff report, but this is kind of the pertinent information for you guys right now. If you have any other questions, please let me know. I do know the Whitmans are in attendance, so if you have any questions for them, I'd be happy to speak to you about it too. That's my presentation, so.
Amy, was there any discussion about the requirement for minimum one parking space?
There was a little bit of conversation around that. One planning commissioner did bring it up under the guise of continually trying to reduce parking standards. So in the R5, a single-family unit has to have two required parking spaces. So adding an accessory dwelling unit would move that requirement up to three. From staff's perspective, when it comes to single-family or any residential unit, we consider any area where you can park a vehicle to be part of the parking space. So if you have, you know, a garage, if it's a two-car garage, that adds to your two. If you have the driver leading out front, that could even add one or two more spaces. So it's really easy to meet these standards. I don't think we've ever really had a situation where they haven't been met, so.
Okay. Does off-street parking count?
Um, yes.
Like adjacent to your house?
Or on-street parking.
Or on-street parking, yeah.
Um, no, not in this case unless it's approved by the planning director and city engineer. But like I said, we really haven't had an issue meeting that standard. So when we talked about it and talked it through with the planning commissioners, they felt that the current proposal would be adequate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Amy, these are on a permanent foundation, correct?
Correct. The building codes require that it be on a permanent foundation.
That's a great question because one of the issues a lot of cities are wrestling with are the small homes being driven on skids.
Yeah, the mobile, tiny, mobile, tiny houses.
Yeah, that's a great clarification. An accessory dwelling unit cannot be a tiny home on like a chassis or a trailer. It has to be on a permanent foundation. We only allowed those types of manufactured homes in like a mobile home park.
Makes sense to me.
Are there further questions or comments or a motion on this item?
Well, I would move to approve the ordinance amending section 27-406A, Use Table Residential, Chapter 27 of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyros DeCarolla?
Yes, and Amy, we appreciate you being so responsive to the needs of the community and making this change before us, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
You're very welcome. Okay, next item, please.
Item 7A, consider setting public hearing for 2021 budget.
Good morning. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Today, I come to you to ask that we set the 2021 budget hearing. You have attached a notice of public hearing that would set the 2021 budget hearing to be August 18th at 9 o'clock in the council chambers. The Hutch News will publish this when we provide it to them, and it needs to be published at least 10 days prior to our public hearing. I wanted to note that what you have attached does not provide the human relations officer full-time. We can alter that. Jeff and I have discussed some options with that. We would like to change that. The way we have this presented, we went back and added two and a half percent merit raise increases. The way we have this presented, we went back and added two and a half percent merit raise increases, and then we reduced the cost of health insurance to offset that. So those changes have been made since we last discussed this. And then our mill levy would remain flat. The notice does include the Hutch Rec Commission, because we levy taxes for them. They have had their budget, budget public hearing as required. So with that, if there's questions about the human relations officer, we can address that, or if you have any other questions, we can address those as well.
Thank you, Angela. Mayor, if I might, the amount discussed for the potential for increases, that does remain discretionary, and that's been negotiated with labor, and so they know that there'll be further discussions on that.
And is that coming out of the general fund? I thought that was coming out of 32.
It is coming out of the Health and Dental Fund.
The reserve.
What we did was basically increase the salary line, decrease the health insurance line within the general fund and the utility funds. So the net effect to the general fund and the utility funds is that they have the same expenditures as before.
Okay, okay.
And so then, the Health and Dental Fund will not have as much cash coming in. That's where we're going to use the cash from, in essence.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then is Hutch Rec asking for a bit of, they had their public hearing, and did they approve a slight increase? Is what it appears, or am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, and I think the reason for that is just the way the motor vehicle tax levy fell. So the way they budgeted is just a total expenditure amount, and then I have to like back into what their mill levy would be and look at what their max mill levy is, so.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would, the reason for my question is because I, I know that they're going to be short about $15,000 for their neighborhood development work, and I feel like that work is incredibly important in a very small amount for a very large impact. So I didn't know if their mill levy was being increased to offset that, or if we needed to have a conversation about whether we're willing to pony that up.
I don't believe we programmed for that based on prior discussions.
Yeah, and we kept it level, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Level funding?
Yes, same as prior.
That's what I thought.
Mayor, I've got two or three questions related to the budget as we get into the discussion this morning on the HRO issue. If I could direct that to Jeff or to Angela. If, if the HR position were fully funded with benefits, the what-if, what would be the fiscal note on that, that particular position in total, excluding the $20,000?
So if we paid all the costs of that and did not.
That's correct, right. In other words, we accept the, or we consider the offer of the community foundation and commit to fully funding that position, including benefits, but excluding the $20,000 for programming.
And Angela's at a slight disadvantage, because she doesn't yet know what the salary ranges are that we've been looking at within the region, so I will share that just briefly. Those ranges fall on the lowest side, from $38,000 full-time, all the way up to $61,000 and some change, call it $62,000 a year. So that is the active range that we'd be looking at. I will share that the current position yields an amount of $46,000 per year. So unlikely that we would hit the top mark first year, but as management typically does, we would structure that to where it would probably fall somewhere, of course, higher than it is now, probably not in the 60s, but close. Sorry.
So without tying you to any specific number, but a range, a probable range for 2021 budgeting purposes?
Yes, sir.
What likely would you see that range to be?
I think you could probably throw $60,000 at it, plus 28% for benefits, and call that the hard line for the position.
60K plus 28%?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just some rough calculations. I think the max extra would be about 30,000, because before this, this didn't qualify for capers, and now they qualify for capers and health insurance. So you got everything together.
That's helpful.
What was the range?
The pay range?
The range that we found regionally is approximately $38,000 to $61,000 and some change. We're loosely calling it 60.
And we're loosely at the 46 right now, so you're adding 10 hours, which is roughly 25%. So would we just reject the 25% more hours off the base pay already? That would bring us close to the high end.
Not quite, because you have to add health insurance and capers.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah, okay.
And then you add, how much is our percent for insurance normally? I'm just running a rough in. I don't want to know exactly. I'm just like, Dave, I just need a.
Yeah, health insurance is 7,300 on average per employee. So obviously, it depends on what health insurance she would pick, or if she picks health insurance, but that's the average. And then capers, you're going to add about, capers is about 9%. So they didn't, she didn't qualify for it before, and now she would.
A follow-up question that, again, the what ifs, if we would fund this position and using the ranges that Jeff, you shared with us, can we fund the position without increasing the mill levy?
Yes, if we project our ending cash balance to be lower.
And that's my next question. What would you project that ending balance?
So basically, you'd take about 30,000 off of our ending cash balance, which we're projecting to be 3.969. So we'd just be at 3,939.
Okay, all right, that's exactly what I needed to know.
And if that is what we decide to do, if we decide to fund that full-time and just reduce our projected ending cash balance, we could publish the notice as presented, and then we would make the changes before the public hearing, and we would be all set, so.
And then after we've agreed to the budget, as far as next year, we have through the end of the year to look at the ordinance itself and make adjustments to the ordinance itself.
That would be a separate matter. You could review it at any time, subject to the discretion of the body.
Well, at this point in time, I'm in favor of making it a full-time position and funding the benefits. Kind of interested in Jade's question, too, about the neighborhood development coordinator. What are we, what are we short, what are they short, 15?
I believe so. Is that?
That's my recollection, yeah.
Yeah, I think every, every year at budget time, we have these conversations and we, and we, we come down to this programming that makes up a miniscule amount, and we start nitpicking off of the things that, you know, we are leveraging other people's dollars, and you know, just a lot of, a lot of really important quality of life work that's, you know, altogether amounts to like 50, 60 grand, and that's, that's where we make the cuts, where, you know, what makes the most sense is, you know, what you're always talking about, Sarah, is like, we need to look at, you know, some of our, some of our structure, and, I mean, those are the conversations we need to have throughout the year, but I would encourage us.
That's why I would like to have a sit-down with the whole council. I've been talking about it. Like, can we all get together? I would like, because we have a new council. We've got old council that's going to be going out soon. We, I think we need to sit down and just maybe redo, because redo some of our short-term and long-term goals.
For sure, that should definitely happen.
And one of the things I think we need to focus on is efficiencies that can be done within the city, so that we don't have to sit here and nitpick about $15,000. We need to be able to, because the thing about it is, year after year now, the city hasn't been able to fund what it needs to fund. And we shouldn't have to raise taxes to get it done, because that's only going to hurt future prospective jobs and other companies that want to come in. Nobody wants, no business wants to pay extremely high taxes, and then you have to abate those taxes, and then what happens when the abatements are up? And you have all kinds of struggle when you have a place that has extremely high taxes. Now, it's not entirely Hutchinson's fault, because Kansas has really high taxes. If you look at the, they take the majority share of the taxes. But I really think that one thing you can grapple with, which I think we should all sit down and do, is finding efficiencies in ways to save money long-term, so we don't have to run into, do we raise taxes or not fund stuff we should be funding?
Yeah, for sure, and I, but I think, you know, with the advent of a new city manager and his new perspective on, on things, we'll see, we'll see changes just by virtue of, of new eyes. But yeah, I guess, I guess my point is, you know, let's, let's not nitpick the tiny, tiny expenditures that make a, a huge impact on people that need it most in our community, so.
We're having a hard year, though, so I'm like, we didn't cut any, I mean, a lot of places have cut funding, and, you know, in the private sector, people are losing their jobs, they've cut funding.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
You know, we have, we still have to be committed to the taxpayers and the fact that, you know.
But we did cut, we cut major, we cut capital improvement program, we cut.
We got $6.2 million out of the original budget proposed by management.
Yeah, but that's still $6.2 million that probably a lot of it would have been nice to fund and had a high impact as well. But there's a lot, a lot of little things add up to it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, for sure.
A lot of, you know, you get five or six little things, and they add up to one big thing.
Mayor, I'd like to see if we could get a consensus here this morning, and to offer this as a recommendation, as a starting point for consensus purposes. I'm not sure if it requires a motion, but that by consensus, that we would direct the city manager to proceed with restructuring the 2021 budget, that would then allow for the creation of a full-time human relations officer, including benefits, and that we give the city manager that authority to modify the budget that would, in effect, create this full-time position effective January 1 of 2021.
I'm okay with that, but I think we need to hold the line on outside agency contribution.
Jade, do you have any idea whether the HEAL grant that they got can go toward?
Is that a motion? I'm so sorry.
No, that was just a consensus.
I was just looking for a consensus here. I could put it in a form of a motion, if that's necessary.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Oh, the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah, the HEAL, yeah.
I'm, you know, I'm not sure on whether or not that funding can be used for that. I would assume that, that it could be. I think it's more about committing long-term to that work, and this year, you know, might be a difficult year to make that commitment. I understand, but.
Mayor, this $15,000 piece, it is, I would agree with you all, it's a very minor piece of dollars. One thing, walking in the door, I did notice that there was almost this, it's more than an opportunity. It seems to be a practice of both agencies, maybe duplicating the same position, the same work in the communities. I think the city has some opportunity in reshaping some of its positions in the future. We're going to have some reshaping that's going to occur. And if there was an appetite for a work session with REC on some of this stuff, so that we avoid duplication and overall tax burden, creating that, so that we could go forward and define what some of these specific roles are. I, I think they're doing an exceptional job. I'm not faulting the quality of the work, but I do think it would be important for us to both gain a long-term vision as to what the city should be doing and what REC would obviously like to be doing. So I've had those discussions internally with the department head, and we do have some opportunity there. I don't think it's going to hurt anything if we do it at one-time deal of $15,000 to cover this. But I did want you to know, there's some opportunities for us here at the city with some retirements that are going to be occurring to reshape this, and to have a discussion as to who we want to do what. Obviously, you've got the decision of who you want to fund for this. Maybe they're doing a great job that we should stay away from. Maybe that's the end of the discussion, but.
Well, I will just share that actually, that position used to be housed in the city, and every year at budget time, we would have this uncomfortable conversation about where are we going to cut? And that was always on the chopping block, and so we suggested to the Hutch Rec that they take it over, because their specialty is programming, and we would contribute to it to try to avoid it, you know, being cut year after year. And so, you know, I'm certainly open to conversations about whether that's more appropriately housed at the city again, but.
Thank you, Mayor, I was unaware of that.
Yeah, yeah, just definitely want to make sure that we're committed to it in some fashion. Whoever does it the best, I'm, I'm excited to support, but.
Well, I've been, had a lot of emails to me, and they accuse me of just sitting here, well, I'm a new commissioner, I'm listening to everything everybody says. I went out to the community and talked to all kinds of people. I'm fully in favor at this time to full-fund the, like Mr. David Line said. Also, I got a question, Mayor. Jeff, are you saying that we go ahead and pay the $15,000 this year and take it this year? Is that what you're telling us?
We're not currently programmed for that. That has not been included in the budget. What, the appetite of the governing body would have to show support for further reducing the cash balance. That's what you'd have to do.
I think for fairness, we haven't, so we just hold the line, send it to all outside agencies, and hopefully, we can all recover economic, we don't even know how bad this economic thing's going to.
You're right.
Turn out long-term. Everything might be fine right now because of all the stimulus that's coming out of the government, but what happens when that stops? What happens when entire businesses fail? What happens when unemployment gets higher? We have so much uncertainty going on. We have not cut any funding from any outside agencies, but we should hold the line and say, I'm sorry, this is just not the year. Sometimes you have to make tough decisions, and even when it's small amounts, small amounts add up.
I will, I will say that, you know, in an environment like this where people are struggling more and more so, that the programs designed to help those people learn to advocate for themselves and to get, gain better knowledge of how to interact with, you know, the governing bodies and other organizations are even more important, it could be argued. And so you take an, an area like southwest Bricktown, that did not exist without this position. You do not have a coalition of neighbors in that area of town advocating for their needs without this position. Same with all of the other designated communities that have, or neighborhoods that have come out of the work of that neighborhood development position.
We're still funding that, so it's not going to completely go away. We didn't say, you know, we're just going to cut our outside funding to that better luck next year. We're still funding it to an extent, and with everything that's going on, things are just going to have to be a little slower. It's not like people are getting together in these large groups. I went to every single one of the meetings. I've gone to every, I went for the yearly meetings at every single neighborhood in, in the city. I went to their yearly meeting this year. But people aren't grouping and gathering. You can't get large volunteer groups to go work on houses right now because of social distancing. There's other things that you just can't do. So maybe next year, when people can get together, and people can gather, people can hold these meetings, then it'd be more appropriate to fund it then.
Yeah. Well, I'm in favor of funding it. If we don't have consensus, I'm, you know, of course, fine with going with what the majority of the governing body wants, because that's, that's how it works. Can't, can't win every time, but I definitely want to advocate for that role. I think it's important in our community.
You're in favor of funding the?
Neighborhood development, at $15,000 and reducing our ending balance to help offset the cost.
So there's two things going on here. Did I understand right?
Yeah, no, you've got it exactly right.
Okay.
I'm in favor of one, not the other.
What say ye, Steve?
I'm, I think we need both. I'm in favor of both of them, this year.
I'm a both.
Okay.
Tony did come back and reduce the amount he was requesting, so I'm not sure if it's $15,000 extra anymore.
I think you're right. I think it was 12.5 or 10, or I can't, I can't remember.
I really can't recall, but I don't think it's an additional 15.
That's getting better by the moment.
If he's reducing, you know.
Yeah. Well, so, I guess the consensus is that approving the budget as presented, but with a few, well, not quite as presented, making the HRO full-time.
And the, the notice of budget hearing that is there, it would not change because of the way it's presented on the form. Your ending cash balance is shown as an expenditure as well. So we're just swapping line items. So what we would actually publish would not change. It would be as presented. It's just in our actual budget book, we would make those changes before the next, before the public hearing.
And also before the public hearing, would a link to the full budget be on the website, so people could review that?
As much as we have done, yes.
Okay.
We don't. We don't have, quite have everything ticked and tied and explanations updated, but we can, we can get some draft up.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
Okay, are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Okay, I will move to approve the notice of hearing setting August eighteenth, twenty twenty at nine AM in the city council chambers as the date, time and place for the formal 2021 budget, uh, public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tymas Tukavala?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Nancy, let's start with you.
Nothing.
Okay, Dave Line, you got anything?
No, I don't have anything this morning.
Okay, what about you, Garza?
Yes, like I said before, I was on to a lot of, I've talked to a lot of citizens and they're all in favor of this human resources job, so I think we did good, so, and we go on from here.
Okay, great, thank you. And Bagwell, you got anything?
No, I don't have anything this morning.
Okay, I don't have anything either. I was going to bring up pickleball, but it came up at the beginning of the meeting, so over to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. During our budget discussions, one item did come up and it was informational for me and I appreciated it, but it related to the memorial building and some of the ongoing expenses that the city does program for that and basically just maintaining the building in its current state. So that spurred staff to initiate an RFP process. We later discussed that and felt that based on market conditions and the fact that most promoters that you would want to attract into that process are in a state of negotiating their current obligations, some going under and having to file, so that is problematic right now. So if you do hear from some people in the community with frustration that we're no longer launching the RFP process, that is true. We're going to wait for the market to cure a little bit.
Okay.
Otherwise, I fear what will happen is we'll have some people that really don't belong in that kind of business approaching us with some real novel plans that have nothing to do with the intended use of the building. And it'll become a tempered discussion that we just don't want to have right now, in my opinion. So we're, we're going to wait on that and hopefully reintroduce that concept when the market heals a little bit.
Okay.
You may hear about that.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Thank you all. Also, I'm sure everybody's heard about the Badgers up at Trinity. We got a Badger problem. I drove it, I didn't see him, I wasn't about to get on the sidewalk. As you all know, I can't run very fast right now, but we do have an issue that I think we can get through it administratively. The method in which they capture these little devils is not fully compliant with the terms of our municipal code under section seven dash one eleven. We do have a provision here that allows us to exempt out, provided the trapper is licensed with the state, and they are. So we're going to do that so that we can make sure nobody gets injured up there on the sidewalk, because I guess there's four or five of them chasing people, literally chasing people on the sidewalk.
Really?
I had no idea. I live right by there.
What exactly is this?
This would be north of Trinity and it's probably, my guess, along the waterway, the drainage
All along the GBI.
Yeah.
Oh, funny.
Really?
Yeah, I didn't see him, but I wasn't about to talk to him, so I'm just going to have to take the school's word for that. And I have had personal conversations with the trapper and he's prepared to do what needs to be done to
Humanely, just, just lie to me if you have to.
Mayor, they carry one million dollars insurance, so they take it very seriously. Great question. They don't want to have to turn a claim into their underwriter and so they are very specific as to how they do this work and I'm sure to the extent possible they will.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
It's kind of like the prairie dogs.
Yeah, like the prairie dogs.
Yeah.
And you guys may recall, when we negotiated my contract, I negotiated hard for an additional thirty days on my start time and there was a reason for that and it was to go into surgery at KU Med and I had a surgery scheduled, it was later canceled due to COVID. Of course, we dealt with COVID coming in the door and everything, but I finally have another surgery date, I'm pleased to say, and that is August twelfth. It's going to have me on my back for probably two or three weeks. I will be accessible, probably two or three days following surgery via Zoom and all other stuff like that, so.
Okay.
If you hear that I've died, that's not true and this is a procedural thing, it's quite common, I'm not terminal and all should be well. So thank you all for your ongoing support.
Okay, fantastic.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Well, Jeff, you brought up something that reminded me of another issue that I, I kind of wanted to address really quickly. The RFP for Memorial Hall made me think of the RFP process we went through for the old water slide property. And I know we're having a lot of conversation about that outside of city council with a kind of dueling groups. Justin had brought up the idea that maybe we all sit down with the different groups and hear a presentation from each of them? Is, is that something that we're still considering, maybe after the budget cycle and after your recovery or?
Mayor, I would definitely support that conversation and it probably is a long enough conversation that would warrant a sit-down. I, I would want to make sure that the one group that is probably the one that continuously spurs this into discussion would attend and participate in that, because I understand the last time I went to RFP, they backed out. So for them to re-energize the discussion each time when there is a process that's specifically developed for them, but then they don't participate in it, that's problematic. So I agree completely, talked to Justin about that. We, we would like to see that discussion happen, but we would want to make sure that we have that one participant at the table for that constructive discussion.
Okay.
I think we can accommodate that.
Wonderful. Okay. We forgot to tell everybody to vote today in our comments.
Mm-hmm.
Go out and vote.
Oh.
What were we thinking?
I don't know.
Vote or don't complain.
I have it on my Facebook page to know how to vote. I actually haven't voted yet, so I'm going to vote here in a minute. I'm going to go vote and then I'm going to pick my son up at Boys and Girls Club. We're going to go out to McDonald's and have lunch together. It was just his birthday a couple of days ago.
Oh, happy birthday to him.
And then I'm going to go to work. So I encourage everybody, go vote on your lunch break, go vote after work. And do you have any information on how the voting, I know it's the county, but is there anything structured different with the voting this year that we could?
Well, a little bit. There were thousands of advance ballots requested, which is a little bit, quite a bit different than in years past, so when the results come in this evening, they may not be the final results.
Yeah.
So we may, those may be delayed, but that's about it. Everybody else's polling station should be open
A lot of times we forth advance ballots, they count them ahead of time and then that was the first number that was posted normally.
Yeah, but then some of them are still going to be coming in later. That's how I understand it.
Jade, this gentleman here has a question.
Yeah, please. Yeah, sure.
I have a property at, my name is Doug Proit. I have a property at seven oh one, or seven oh three East Avenue A. And I've had an issue with the water meter. I, my complaint was that I thought they were reading the wrong meter and the meter at seven oh one is, I used to own the property at seven oh one as well. So there's some confusion sometimes on the billing, I believe, even with my new Eversy bill, I'm going through some problems with satellites reading the meters. Well, my thought was that they were reading the wrong meter at the water department and they, they adamantly said they were not. They've shut my water, my water's been shut off for two weeks and I, and I, I could pay the bill, but the fact is I need this remedy, this situation remedied. They shut the water meter off and then they, they claimed that they changed the meter out to my address and basically I've never seen anybody, any, anybody from the water department come and change the meter. They, they said that the meter number at seven oh one is not the same meter as seven oh three, but I, I would like to have somebody investigate that a little bit further into my, into my bill because I, I know that I'm not, I don't water my grass, both neighbors water all the time and my bills are over a hundred dollars a month and, and I, and I'm, you know, I'm not using that much water. And I have a bigger home than they both do, but I'm not watering my grass, so I knew there was an issue, but, and sometimes my payments are made and then they're not recognized for five or six days later. I don't know why my bank is allowing that, but it's, it's documented that I paid the bill, but the bill will come out after my payment has gone through. Then the bill, the bill comes out prior to my payment going through for the last one and then the bill, I'm billed again for the same amount that I just paid. And it's kind of a bank issue as well, but I, you know, it's documented that I've made that payment, but the city doesn't recognize it because it hasn't actually come through before the bill is paid, okay? So there's some issues there, but I also believe that the, the meter's put in the wrong spot.
Mayor, we appreciate the inquiry. This has not yet advanced to my office, so the first time hearing of it, my job as employed by you all is to take care of these issues, so certainly let me jump into that and with this gentleman's permission, I will share account information with you all, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
That way you all can know that we've taken care of it sufficiently and know the history and the background of the issue.
You might, you might tell Jeff there's some skunks on, on the seven hundred blocks Avenue A too, if he wants to
In addition to the Badgers, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We'll look into that, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tymas Tukavala?
Yes.